I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back into session as we recessed two weeks ago. One of the first things that I want to do is apologize. Two weeks ago, when I opened the meeting, I forgot to do the pledge and invocation, and I've received a lot of bad comments about that. But I am not an atheist. I promise you, I am not an atheist. So at this time, I would like to have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And if I could, I would like to ask Robbie if you would lead us.
It's all right. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you provided for us. We thank you for the rain that you have sent. Lord, we ask that you watch over us, be with us during this meeting, keep us focused on our duties. And, Lord, we just ask that you keep us safe on our travels home. Lord, thank you for just blessing us and for watching over us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Robbie. All right. I've just had something added to our agenda tonight. I need to amend the agenda to include the budget calendar at this time. The budget calendar for fiscal year 20 had several dates on it of when we expected to get everything done. There has been some changes toward the end of it. And I'll announce those changes. The advertised proposed rate in the county budget from 4.8 to 4.1, 2020. Public hearing on the school board budget will be changed from 4.20 to 4.13, 2020. Public hearing on the county budget will be changed from 4.20 to 4.13, 2020. Public hearing on tax levy will change from 4.20 to 4.13. Board review public hearing comments will change from 4.20 to 4.14 of 2020. The adopting of the county budget for fiscal year 2021 will change from May the 11th to April 27th of 2020. And adopt the tax levy for 2020 will change from May the 11th to April 27th of 2020. Do I have a motion to accept the changes to the budget calendar?
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second and a discussion. Hearing no discussion, I will call for a vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrault?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrault?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, so those changes will be made. All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Next item of business is a payment of invoices. And I think that's included in your packet. Do I have a motion to accept the payment of these invoices?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we accept the payment of the invoices as presented.
I have a motion to accept the payment of these invoices. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second and a discussion. Hearing no discussion, I'll take a vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrault?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrault?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I have one correction.
Okay.
In the very first part, it has members present, and it lists me, and I was not here.
Okay. All right. So with that correction being made, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting?
I make a motion we accept the minutes from previous meetings with that change.
Okay. I have a motion to accept with that change. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will call for a vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrault?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrault?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. At this time, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing on twice-per-year tax collections. I will open this public hearing at 7:05 PM to hear comments. And according to the sign-up sheet, no one signed up to speak on a public hearing for twice-a-year tax collections.
I did. I thought I did.
You signed up on one, but not this one. But, I mean...
Can I switch them? I don't even know what the other one is.
The other one's just a, uh, to speak.
Oh, no. I want to be on the other.
You want to be on this one?
Please.
Okay. Is that all right? Okay. Ms. Perry?
Good evening. I'm having a little bit of a deja vu. It seems to me like I came here a year or maybe two years ago, and I think I was one of two who was in support of you doing twice-a-year, and apparently, that never happened. I'm still here in support of it. I think that if you or the powers that be have decided that this is something that is needed in the county to make our budget flow better, then I don't think that it really matters what I think or what anyone else thinks. I'm kind of liking it to, I work for H&R Block, and we're a franchise, and we work under their rules. In 2014, they changed our program that I had used for 15 years that I could just buzz through. They didn't call us up and say, "We're going to change your program." They implemented it, and we did it. And Ms. Treasurer, her name's Fels Mann, and Ms. Commissioner of Revenue, they will, they'll adapt. It may be difficult, and it may create more work, but if it's what we need, it's what we need. And you all don't need to be thinking about your next election or your, or the perception that is given to you all by your constituents. You, you're sworn to do what's best for all of us, and if that means twice-year taxation, that's what it means. So that's all I have.
So that being the only one that signed up, I'll close this public hearing at 7:07. Gentlemen, we need to take action on the twice-a-year tax collection?
Mr. Chairman, if you may.
No.
The county attorney has written me a memo that I didn't make, you know, a copy of. If he could speak to that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Yes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right. I'll open the public hearing back up. No.
There's nothing for the public hearing.
Oh.
I can, I can just address it now that it's, it's before the board for consideration.
Okay.
I have reviewed the process for transition to twice yearly taxation. Spoken with a number, a number of constitutional officers in other localities who've made that transition, as well as some of my colleagues at Sanz Anderson who've assisted with that transition in the past. I also did take a few minutes and speak with Ms. Zimmerman and Ms. Williams just before the meeting as well. And I feel like there are some clear benefits to making the transition, although it also will clearly impose additional workload on, on both the Commissioner of Revenue's office and the Treasurer's office. Pursuant to 58.1-3916, the governing body, Board of Supervisors, is vested with the authority to set due dates, to impose penalties and interest for, for late payments. You can establish a twice, you can, you can make that transition to twice yearly taxation. It's to be in two equal installments, or as much as we can possibly make them equal. If the board is inclined to make a transition, it would be my recommendation that the first installment be due sometime before the end of this fiscal year. Simply because you enjoy such a benefit immediately to your fund balance, and it assists with cash flow. The board does have some discretion to ease that transition as far as, if you, if you make the tax due, for example, the ordinance right now calls for June 15th, or, I mean, June 5th. And we can, we can amend that before adoption, and depending on what the board's sense of, of timing is. But you could also provide some grace period past the due date when no fee, no late fee or interest would apply. That is within your discretion, although I would recommend that it only be applicable to this first-year transition. From the perspective of the Treasurer, the Commissioner of Revenue's office, again, it's going to impose additional work in terms of just quickly turning around the land book and processing the bills. Bills would need to go out 14 days prior to the due date. And again, notice be given additionally, public notice be given 10 days in advance of the due date. So if we were to adopt a June 5th as the date, then you'd be walking back 14 days from, from that as far as when the Treasurer would have to be sending bills out. Obviously, that's going to necessitate some adjustment in the county's budget calendar, which you've, you've taken some action to move those dates up already. So you are positioning yourself to make a transition if, if that's what you determine. I've reviewed the county code as well. I didn't see any changes that were required to the existing tax exemptions, land use taxation, veterans exemption, or, you know, the additional exemptions that the county offers. You wouldn't necessarily have to adjust those application due dates immediately, although in discussing it with the Commissioner, it is recommended to, that we consider adjusting those as soon as possible to move those dates forward, just to give her office more time to, to process exemption applications. Finally, the, there were some additional concerns that have been raised regarding to additional complications that might be encountered by mortgage lenders and the legal community as far as when they're processing real estate closings, how do they allocate, how do they prorate the, the taxes, and how do they allocate the escrow from, from mortgage? And I think that's going to be an adjustment period. That's something that, if the board takes action now, there will be a few months for the local legal community and, and real estate community to kind of wrap their heads around. But this is done in other localities. It's not something that's, you're reinventing the wheel. It's, it's an adjustment, but it's not something that I see as insurmountable in any way. If there are any questions, you know, I'm happy to address those. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, gentlemen, do you want to take action on this twice-a-year tax collection tonight? Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion and we adopt the twice-a-year tax collection ordinance.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt the twice-a-year tax collection. Do I have a second?
Hang on, hang on.
One thing I would ask the board to consider, the draft ordinance put in just a sort of placeholder date of June 5th for that due date. Given the calendar that we've adopted, you, you might want to build in another week or two into that due date. So maybe consider June 15th, June 20th, as we're possible.
I'm, I will amend my motion to institute this on June 20th, 2020.
Okay. I have a motion to make the first due date of June 20th, 2020. Do I have a second?
June 20th would be Saturday.
Well, when, when the due date falls on a Saturday, it usually goes to the Monday afternoon.
Okay. Can we just leave it that, or you want me to change it to that Monday afternoon?
Just leave it on the 20th.
Okay.
Like those even dates.
All right.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second that we adopt twice-a-year tax collection. First due date would be June 20th, 2020. Any discussion?
There's never a good time to pay taxes. Based on some personal experience I have, I might just say that we may want to consider the next one to be in February. February 8th, February, August split is really a good time. Gets away from Christmas. And I understand we have to do it in fiscal year, this time. But our second payment, we may want to consider doing it, I just throw out a time, February the 5th or something like that.
What's going to date of December 5th? Do we need to make that change now? Would be the appropriate thing to do?
I understood that. Just food for thought, Dr. Littrell, or you actually?
I think it's a good idea personally, but that's just one of six. And you said we could change it at some time later, but I don't know if you want to do it now, or even consider it now, or talk about it later.
For the purpose of tonight, I would, I would probably stick with June and December.
If we need to adjust it, we adjust it then?
Yeah. We might want to get input from the...
There's two back here.
Two ladies here as well on those other dates.
And maybe from the public, because August may not be a good time for landowners who are farmers, because you're kind of, you're going up against it at that time of year, and by December, you kind of know. You don't have... Just saying.
A lot of people in the area pay their tax when their state and federal tax comes back too, which falls...
And that way, their penalty is not so big.
Right.
You know, they're getting by with a little penalty, but not a huge penalty.
We do have some folks that pay monthly or quarterly.
Yeah, we have pre-payers, yeah.
And this shouldn't affect them in any way.
Yeah.
I spoke with the bank, and they can pretty much work around as far as escrow any time, so just make the call.
This first year, we'll, I guess we'll make rules concerning how we would deal with the grace periods and things like that at a later date. It's probably a good idea to address some of the...
If there's, if there's interest in the board, I can propose to language right now to, to let for grace period.
All the ones I've talked to has been opposed to it. I've had two that was in favor of it. Farmers, they say that's when their income is fall. So I really, and then I've had one to mention to me, said, "Well, we go to twice a year, it'll soon be paying as much every six months as we're paying in a year." With the reassessment coming up, if some of it changes, their bills go up, they're going to holler, you know? Yep, you got it.
There'll be some data changes on the tickets for the first installment. My suggestion is, if you want to take in consideration your financial situation, January, February, whatever, on the 2nd, that we send out two notices in this first year, you know? Because that, that helps the people know that it's, lots of times, they'll send out one ticket with, with two parts. You pay the first part and then the second part. But I, I think the people deserve the chance to be reminded.
Would we?
On the 2nd.
Yeah, that brings up a question. Would we, so if you, on June 5th, or whatever day that we chose that the taxes do, would it show what's due the rest of the year to December? Or is it... How would we do that?
No, it'll just show, it'll just show the half.
Just show the half?
It will.
And it would be stated on...
This time. Now, we can probably work on it for, for the next year to, to change it around the data and everything, but working against time, I think it would work easier for just half.
Can I make a comment? I got land in Floyd County. I pay taxes twice a year down there, June, June 5th and December 5th. And I pay the same amount like on June 5th and December 5th. It's kind of split. And I've been doing it for years down there, so Floyd County is in good shape right now.
You know, the primary reason this is to help us, help with our, our revenue flow. I mean, we keep us from having to go take a loan each year and prevent that from happening, and we have to pay it back. And that's the whole principle behind this.
Did we have tomorrow last year to get through?
Mr. Dalton prevented us from having to get through, but we're, we're in a position right now where we're having to cut the budget, one and a half million dollars, so...
And that was never done in the last couple of years. We was always having to do appropriations at the end of the year without being notified that these were coming up, these situations were coming up.
The reason I ask that question is, the legislature says we're in excellent shape. Carroll County, you couldn't do no better.
No, that wasn't what he said.
Yes, of course.
But let, but let me speak to that. Well, we need, we address that later. I'll address that.
But anyway, how much is it going to cost us? It is...
How much is it going to cost us?
Yes, how much is it going to cost the taxpayer to go through twice a year?
The first year, in my belief, around $20,000.
I think that's about right.
Second year, it, we can just send it out once, and you don't have to do that.
Well, they're going to have to hire more people. They're going to have to buy more stamps.
Well, the $20,000 includes, the additional $20,000 includes the postage, no? But it doesn't include employees.
Postage is going to cost $48,000, but I figure...
We get 30... We only pay 30 some cents.
32,000 people. So that's what, 96,000 cents?
Yeah, but we get a, we get a cut rate at 32 cents.
It don't go to 32,000 people. It just goes to...
This'll be real estate.
Real estate only, yeah. Just goes to every, how many parcels of land or...
You're going to have to send out three of them. You're going to have to send out two real estate and one personal property.
Well, you're already sending out one personal property and one real estate.
And, and if you're not going to have to hiring more people in your office, then you got too many people in there now.
I didn't say I wasn't going to have to hire.
Oh, so you are going to have to hire more people.
I don't know. We've got to do the process before we can see what it takes to...
I assure you, you'll wind up, you'll wind up hiring four people.
Oh, no.
Yeah, you'll save the need to, so they're giving four.
Are you going to be able to manage the money any better? My question.
It's...
You know, you're getting it once a year. Why, why are you always shorting money? You don't know what your income is? I mean, actually know what's coming in?
That's part of it, yeah.
Is that part of it?
Yeah, people don't pay their taxes. They go delinquent, and we're trying to collect those. One of the things that I like about the idea is the cash flow, so that we don't have to do these promissory notes or these budget adjustment notes. I know in 2018, when I sat here, we had to borrow 3 million for 60 days, and it cost us $9,000 in interest. So we're trying to look at a way that we've got the cash flow to pay our bills without having to borrow money to cover them, during, waiting on taxes to come in.
Well, this is what I don't understand. You know, you take in approximately 15 million, December 5th. Why, why can't we put that 7 million over in a bank and draw it out in June? It'd be the same thing.
That...
It'd make the same difference.
Well, that's, that's the...
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you why you don't want to do it. This is originally, you don't want to do it. What you're, what I'm thinking about is, my taxes are due December 5th. You want me to pay them six months early, so you'll have the cash.
Don't just pay half of them.
Well, you know, you want me to pay six months early, so you'll have the cash. Rather than try to manage your money, you just want me to give you 7 million dollars come June, so you'll have the new profits.
We need it to pay bills.
Like I said, why don't you take 7 million in December and put it in the bank? Come June, draw out 7 million. That'd be the same type, make the same difference.
I'll address that.
No, it won't make the same difference, because you're going to come up 7 million dollars to the due on this deal, because people are paying their taxes six months early.
They're paying half of their taxes.
Six months early, they're paying their tax.
Half.
Just half of them.
Well, they 7 million dollars.
If they all pay.
If they all pay. But you don't get my point.
I do, I do, sir. I do get your point.
You know, I'm used to paying my taxes December 5th. So if I pay in June, if it's half, whatever you say, I'm paying you 7 million dollars extra. I guess, yes.
No, because we would only collect, if it's 7 million, we'd collect that in June, and we'd collect another 7 million in December.
Exactly.
So how are we collecting twice?
You've already paid for this year.
We've already, we've already paid.
No, we paid for last year.
Yeah, we paid for last year.
Right.
We'll pay it in June.
Now, we're getting ready to pay for this year.
Don't you see what I'm saying? If you're going to do it, why not start it in January instead, rather than in June? I'm all in if you're going to do it in January rather than June. But, you know, if you do it in June, I'm paying ta, I'm paying tax twice.
Well, it comes...
Because I already paid for the, for the 2019, now I'm going to pay for 2020.
Half of it.
Half of it. Come June, you know, the taxpayer in Carroll County is going to give you 7 million dollars. Come June. But you could have went with the December 5th date and, and got your 15 million, put 7 million in the bank, or on a CD or something, draw it out in June, you're not going to pay that fine.
We don't have the cash in the bank to do that. And we have bills coming in that we, that 17 million is gone just like that.
I know, but that's what I'm talking about.
The reason, let me explain.
The 7 million when you get in June is going to be...
Let me, let me explain the fund balance. Fund balance is the amount of money that carries you from, from June to probably November, October, before your taxes come in. That money was used up eight years ago. They spent the money. We're just now coming back to, we're about even. That was there before us. They spent the fund balance. We have, when I first got on the board, I encouraged the passing of a 12% fund balance with the requirement that we develop a plan to meet that two, three years ago. And we've been working on that plan, but it's not come to fruition. Number one, the jail costs have gone up. CSA has gone up, and the cost of living has gone up without any additional taxes coming in. You haven't had any increase in your taxes. That's the reason. We're in a bind, we're in.
I mean, well, that tax rate is higher than any county in the land.
That's why, that's one of the reasons I've fought against raising the taxes, but we, we have a choice now.
It's apparent in plainness and nose on your face that the Carroll County board of supervisors don't know how to manage money. I mean, what else can I say? This is a public hearing.
You should have signed up to speak.
Yeah, well...
The sheet's normal, sit outside. Mr. Chairman, I call for the, the vote. Call for a vote to start the twice-a-year tax collection? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrault?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrault?
No.
And I'll vote yes. Motion pack, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business, consent calendar.
Next item on the agenda is new business, consent calendar. Entertainer motion to accept the consent calendar?
Make a motion. Will you accept the consent calendar as presented?
Have a motion to present the, to accept the consent calendar as presented. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Next item is SB 35. And I open the floor for discussion on SB 35.
As you know, the General Assembly is currently considering raising minimum wages in several bills to 15 dollars an hour. There's even a couple of proposals that those be weighted across the state. The impact in Carroll County, just in our, our little neck of the woods on the Board of Supervisors, is about two and a half cents on a real estate dollar at 15 dollars a simple. I would suggest that y'all call your senators and House of Delegates members. And there's a, John Bastard wrote a very good article with speaking points. I would use his speaking points and the differences in Virginia to get that message back out to legislators. If that comes 15 dollars, it's not billed in the proposed budget, and that would be a midstream. It would go into effect over time, so you will be dealing with that if that bill passes. Right to work, repeal of the right to work, and the teachers' unions will be pretty detrimental to Carroll County and all the rural counties.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. And, and to put that in plain and simple terms, if, if the state does what they're proposing, it will destroy Carroll County. They're talking about we have to pay 15 dollars an hour minimum wage to all of our employees, which is going to be a, a whole lot of money. If they get the, take away the right to work in the state of Virginia, then we have to pay union wages, which is a lot more money than what we're paying now. So I would encourage everyone to contact Delegate Jeff Campbell. He's our delegate in Richmond. We have two state senators. David Suterlein covers Sulphur Springs and Pine Creek. Senator Bill Stanley covers the other three districts of southern part of Carroll County. And encourage them to, to, to knock this down. If it goes through, we will be talking about a lot of money. A lot of money. And the only thing I can see positive out of it is it would basically cripple Carroll County. So I encourage everyone to, to please contact your state delegates. State Delegate Jeff Campbell. Contact State Senator David Suterlein and State Senator Bill Stanley in Richmond, and try to get them to stop this. I don't think, right now, Richmond is considering Southwest Virginia anymore than what it would be to us. Any other discussion? Okay. Next item is item C under new business, SBC, SBDC request, motion to approve or deny. Anyone? SBDC, which I'm looking for it right now.
Asking for $100.
Okay, what is, what is SBDC?
It's a small business thing at the Crossroads Institute. And they're asking $100 for a job, 2020 job fair. So he provided a light breakfast catered by squealers.
Okay, so the S, the SBDC, which is small business... Development. I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay, I saw that one. I'm sorry. Small business service units comprised of individuals that work in job readiness, workforce development, and economic development will be hosting a jobs fair at Crossroads Institute on Thursday, March 19th. The jobs fair draws a crowd of over 100 job seekers and about 40 area employees with current job openings. They're requesting $100 from us to provide a light breakfast. Thanks for your consideration. Do I have a motion to accept, approve, or deny this request? Do I have a motion to approve or deny this request?
I think we just pass it by.
Do I?
I think we just pass it by.
Okay. Hearing no pro, no motion to approve or deny, then we'll go to the next item, which is the APCO request, a motion to approve or deny their request.
Is that just for an easement slail?
It's going from overhead as you go south on Pine Street, down to the corner on our property. Go overhead, then it crosses the road, right across the road from the parking lot where the PSA parks all their vehicles that y'all gave to the town of Hillsville. Then it goes underground from the right of way all the way to the Carter Building. That whole area where all the pavers and stuff will be taken out and underground, service put underground and replaced there.
Is that to serve Carroll County property only, or is it to serve other property as well?
It serves the Carter Wilkinson House and the Carroll County Old Courthouse.
But it's not, it's just, it's for service, not for, just across it?
Yes, for service.
Well, they return it to the original condition when they...
That would be part of the ease. That is the obligation.
I'll make a motion. We approve that request.
APCO's request?
Yeah. And authorize the county administrator to sign it.
And authorize the county administrator to sign.
Okay, I have a motion to approve APCO's request and allow the county administrator to sign it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, next item is the VA sign, guide sign, VA guide sign, which I'm looking for.
Does that, does that go on the interstate? Is that what this is about? Mr. Dalton?
This is actually on Route 58. It's the brown sign that directs you down into the park.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's the board's pleasure to approve it. I've reviewed the document, and it appears that there's a, there's a line missing. So if you're inclined to approve it, I would just suggest that it's approved, 72, final approval by council. Because there's, I don't know whether it's just the image that was scanned, but there's, appears to be a whole line missing on the, on the document. So I would just want to clarify that, and then I, I saw no other concerns.
Okay. You heard counsel's advise. Do I have a, a motion to approve or deny with counsel's recommendation?
Did I read that this is a, what caused such?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see that bottom page. So I'm going to withdraw my motion.
I make a motion. We deny this request.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to deny the request. Do I have a second?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second to deny the VA guide signs. Any discussion? The only thing that I see, just talking about discussion, is they want, they want us to pay for it monthly and...
It's per sign. It's not, it's not...
Per sign, yeah.
It's not cheap per sign either.
Yeah, I know. It's very expensive. Just for a sign.
I thought it said government and non-profit entities are not charged annual fees. Was that just the annual fees and still have to pay for the signs?
That's mine. I read it. That's the way it's going to cost us. For a major sign, $700, or for a minor sign, $250 per sign.
Then you go down to the next line that says that's for commercial entities only.
Do we look on the third page?
Third page.
Fourth page.
Fourth page. So there is no annual fee then, right?
Still didn't go far enough there.
Well, then I rescind my, my motion, Mr. Chairman, if there's no annual fee for us. It's not going to cost us nothing. That's free advertisement.
That's what it sounds like to me.
That's what, I mean, is this the way you read it, Mr. Durbin? Okay.
Okay. We'll back up.
Well, I'll move that we continue with our participation agreement and sign a new one.
72 approval by council.
I'll second Mr. Littrell's motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Dr. Littrell?
Repeat your motion.
I just said that I've made a motion to continue with our participation and sign a new agreement for the review by council.
Okay. Have a motion to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, that brings us to the next old business. Under old business, the first item is solid waste franchise agreement.
Mr. Chairman, we'd ask you to withdraw that until a later time.
All right, that has been withdrawn until a later time. Second item is the fireworks invoice from the town of Hillsville. Do I have a motion to accept or deny that fireworks invoice?
Did we agree to it beforehand?
We tabled it, too.
Dr. Littrell wasn't here last meeting. It was discussed. I assumed we had paid it in the past. And, but it wasn't in the budget at any of those times. Is that not correct, Mr. Dalton? So I'm not sure when the agreement was approved. If it was, they'd just send us a bill. That's what this one is.
What we're discussing, the town of Hillsville sent us an invoice dated February 5th for Carroll County's share of the fireworks, $9,582.
Who authorized it?
That's what we're trying to figure out. We knew nothing about it until we got this invoice. They say that we've always helped them with their fireworks, and we can't find it. There was nothing put in last year's budget to help them this year. And...
They used, they used money out of a contingency fund to pay that. It was not a budget item other than the contingency fund.
Somebody said the Southwest paid for them last year.
Excuse me?
Southwest Farm Supply paid for them last year.
Did they? Well, we, we paid some money on them last year also, didn't we?
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding. Just for discussion on this, I talked to the town treasurer. She came up to me after the meeting because I made the motion to table it because they wouldn't help us with the reassessment. And she told me that it never came before town council, that we were asking for help with the reassessment of the property that's in town of Hillsville. I don't know what happened there. I did talk to one of the town council members. He called me the next day going, why aren't you going to help us? And we were like, we didn't know we've ever helped you. And, you know, the fireworks show costs $19,165. And I know it's a great thing for Carroll County and the town of Hillsville, but right here in this budget crunch, and we, we've met all day, and we're meeting all this week with the new proposed budget, and it's going to come up here a little bit later on, I can't vote to give them $9,500 for fireworks when we're cutting people's budgets left and right. They wanted us to come and discuss it with them. They meet the same nights we do. So I, I don't know where to go on this.
It, I've had some people tell me that, you know, when it was first started, it was, they wanted us to help and we helped. And they named it the Hillsville Fireworks instead of the Carroll, Carroll County slash Hillsville Fireworks, and that we never got, we never could get any recognition out of it. It's like a lot of the local businesses that supported it got more recognition than the county did at that time, and we were contributing quite a bit of money to it. So I just, I don't know that it's something we should be, be helping out with, but...
To be as a citizen is not a bad thing. You know, I'm sure the kids love it. But the fact of it is, I don't see how we can allow people to offer us spending $10,000 and not talk to nobody, not talk to the county administrator, none of the board supervisors. That, that's the negative part of the whole thing.
I kind of agree with you.
I'd like to send a town bill to clean my yard up.
Excuse me?
I'd like to send a town bill to clean my yard up every year with debris.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. Yeah, you live right next to the death bug.
Oh, yeah, he bombed it this year. He bombed.
I mean, if we, if we allow people, you know, just spend money like that, we're never going to get out of it.
You're right.
Well, it should, this has been going on for years, and why it was not a budget item, that's what makes me, caused me pause once I realized that.
That's why the contingency funds was removed, too, correct?
Yep, last year, exactly. It's one of the things I did not like, was several contingency funds of different things in there. That's why the full board is usually involved in the budget process in the last couple, last couple of years, last two.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept or deny the fireworks invoice. I make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny.
Have a motion to deny, do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Next thing on the agenda is the budget reductions. And I understand that our finance committee is gonna go over those. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, we've approved... Let me make sure I'm reading this right. All these changes, should we read all these changes or just give the... Under the Sheriff's Department, we had forty thousand dollars cut and then we needed additional information that we, on some other items that we had a discussion with. And other things that we addressed was twice a year tax collection. And do we need to read this whole thing, should we do that, Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
So, let me see here. We have recommendations from board supervisors. Our board's budget, we cut it thirty-five thousand dollars. County fair, we cut thirty-two thousand dollars. County administrator's budget, we cut eighty thousand dollars. Finance department, fifteen thousand. Tourism, nine thousand. Information technology, thirty thousand. District court, eight thousand. Clerk of Circuit Court, five thousand. Commonwealth Attorney, three thousand. And then the Sheriff's Department, that's four thousand.
Forty.
Forty, excuse me, that's a big...
I'm sorry.
That's a big number. Twenty thousand for the fire department and five thousand from the rescue squad. And then on the, uh, five thousand from animal control. Fifty thousand for emergency services. Forty thousand from Carroll Fire and Rescue. Kane and Trash Site, fifteen thousand. Courthouse complex, I'm assuming that's the maintenance, thirty thousand. Cannery, five thousand. Maintenance, twenty thousand. County Property Management is ten thousand. Recreation Center, that's the Jim Woodlong, five thousand. Social Services, thirty thousand. Senior Citizens, fifteen thousand. That's several different groups, the senior citizen. Carroll County Public Service Authority, is that...
Yeah, it's that. Public schools.
Public schools. It's five hundred thousand. And I guess the Carroll County Recreation Department, is that correct?
Yeah.
Twenty thousand. Farmer's Market, thirty-five thousand. Subsidy to the IDA and Carroll County Public Service Authority, seven hundred thousand. Total of one point seven two-two million. Or one million seven hundred and twenty-two thousand. Just to go back, last year, we had to increase the budget almost a million dollars because of the CSA and the cost of the jail. That's something that was totally out of my control.
I'll make a note to this. This does still include a four hundred thousand dollar increase in the regional jail and a three hundred thousand dollar increase to CSA. So we're cutting it to one point seven two-two million and still having that seven hundred thousand in positive growth in the budget, so... There's a lot of sacrifices made in that, but...
I will say it. We had a previous individual said we shouldn't make these cuts, that's draconian. But if you don't make the cuts early enough, like this year, this is, it happens worse, it gets worse. We're at the apex, it just got worse this year. Because we didn't address it last year, or the year before. That's all I'm gonna say about that. Do we need to...
Chairman, is that, Mr. Hill, is that a motion?
Yep. Motion to approve.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the budget reduction recommendations as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
I will say this, we're hurting individuals. You know, when we cutting budgets, it may be part-time personnel, it may be, who knows? But it affects personnel. Just to let everybody know. So these things are not easy and it's tough, but it has to be, you know, everybody suffers in this town.
Any other discussion?
What's read is by the change, not by the proposed.
I'm sorry, no.
Yes.
He read the change and I'm just making sure of the proposed.
Right. Yes, he read the change that we've made in the budget. And those pretty much match up with the proposed, as far as I can see, all the way through. The only thing I've got to say about it is, it's tough. It's tough to do it. But this board was led down the road about a year ago at this time that we had this money. And this money was available to all these people. And that was why we voted for the budget that we're currently in. We found out later that we did not have the revenues to cover this. We were misled very seriously in all this. I know that we have met with, we or the county administrator has met with all these people and they understand that we just don't have the money. And so far, I think ninety-nine percent of them has accepted it. And they're willing to work with us to make it right. We're working very hard this year so that we don't ever have to face this again. We're gonna know what the revenue is before we adopt a budget and fulfill these requests for all this money. Make sure that we've got the revenue for the expenditures. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a couple more comments.
All right.
There's something else that has gone on recently that never happened in this past is where we sit down with the constitutionals and work through the budget and see how, what kind of improvements and savings that we can have. That never occurred before. There's, you've got three of them in here, constitutionals, and we've been in meetings with them frequently. That never occurred before. And we're gonna continue that. We had all day today, people come in, talked about their budget, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. There's specific things that he's working on that's gonna hopefully improve savings. You know, we can't tell the Sheriff's Department to stop arresting people. We just can't do that. We have to put people in jail when they do bad stuff. You know, so, and you can't slow that down. Maybe there's some other ways we can do things, but, you know, we're just faced with tough times. You know, I heard something today from the Commonwealth Attorney was talking about just a two-hundred percent increase in stuff over in Galax. That's what we're having in southwest Virginia, major drug problem. That's all I'm gonna say.
Call for the vote. Okay, I'll call for the vote to accept these budget reductions. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, next item is the lease agreement. Motion to accept or deny. Mr. Dalton, can you explain this, what this is?
We request the county attorney to draw up a lease agreement. This is for the group that's scanning it, that the actual name would be Miss Galila Brady, I believe is what we were told. And I would request permission to execute this agreement based off of that.
And this agreement is dealing with the old courthouse?
It is.
Okay.
Next to the last page, it shows leased property. County Attorney, do this up.
Mr. Chairman, this is, um, it's essentially identical to the terms that were offered to the Genealogy Society. It's just a different designated premises. It's that other, I think it's the old board supervisor.
Yes.
It's designated as lease premises on the exhibit. And it's my understanding that there is, the service that's being provided, there's no monetary rent, but insurance that's approved by the county will be required.
So you've heard the lease agreement, I need the motion to accept or deny.
Make a motion, we accept the lease agreement as presented.
I have a motion to accept it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll call for a vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. We accept it. Next item is to go into closed session, articles...
We have no, nothing going closed session.
Excuse me?
We have no discussion.
Okay, so we have nothing to go into closed session for. All right. So we'll skip that item and the next item is adjournment.
Recession, recess tomorrow morning at eight o'clock?
We'll recess, okay. Instead of adjournment, board supervisors will recess until eight AM tomorrow morning. All in favor? Meeting recessed.